Time is 10:03 a.m. This is our Commissioner's Weekly Status Update. Attending Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. First item, Fire Department Impact Fee Presentation.
Can I just add? Sorry, can I just ask? Grant, I know you're working on an email issue. How long is your item going to take? Okay. So is it okay if we just handle Grant?
Yeah, let's do it.
Just so we can get...
Okay, so we're going to handle number two first. Go right ahead.
Yes, this is a just a notification of what we're intending to do with budget this year. Basically, what we have is a copier fleet out there that doesn't have a regularly budgeted amount to maintain that copier fleet. We did a study to make sure what we have out there kind of as a liability. And there's basically $273,000 worth of copiers out there throughout the entire county. And so manufacturers' recommendations are you replace these things every five years. We know we can get at least seven on average out of these things. So basically, you do the math there and that ends up being about $40,000 a year. So this is basically to let you know that it's our intention to add an operating budget to the IT budget this year to account for that $40,000, to try to keep these copiers on track because what's happened is they're falling farther and farther behind. If we did everything right this year, I'd be bringing $120,000 in requests to you and I don't want to do that. We have a plan. We can get this done if we get going on this right away. So I just, again, wanted that not to be a big surprise for you to see that operating budget increase this year.
Thank you.
So I don't think we need any actions.
Oh, okay. So you're basically giving us a heads up for potential. Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Grant.
So that's it.
I'm sorry? Ann, can you hear us? Ann, can you hear us?
Okay, so it doesn't look like it. Join audio, and there you go. And then computer audio. Probably just...
Ann, can you hear us?
Ann, can you hear us?
Oh my gosh, now we've got to...
All right, so, well, do it again, but then don't hit the test. Join with computer audio. There you go. Try that one. There you go. There you go.
So you can hear us now, Ann?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, off we go. Okay, then, so moving back up to item number one, Fire Department Impact Fees Presentation. Come right up.
Has Rudy already had his chance?
No.
I'm going now, Ann.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, good morning. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Duncan, for allowing us to come down here and put it on the agenda. My name is David Rudaba. I live in Athol, Idaho. I'm a Commissioner with Timberlake Fire Protection District. I'm here to represent the majority of the fire districts within Cootney County, the seven of us, to talk about impact fees today. As we know, we are experiencing astronomical growth in Cootney County, like other areas of the state. With that, we also know the climate in general where people are not friendly towards levies or bonds at this time. We also know that our state legislation, i.e. one of the bills, Senate Bill 1108, dealing with property taxes, it has been moved to next this coming Thursday. They took it from today and moved it to Thursday. I will say the reason I believe for that bill going there, real quick, is because of a trading bill called Senate Bill 1170, which corrects the levy rate information that's flawed in Bill 1108 that we've been talking about with the legislation on that. So with that, on the impact fees, our fire districts, emergency services, our service levels, and our funds are not keeping up with what we have to provide by code and what we're supposed to do. I've got representatives from Northern Lakes here, Eastside Fire, of course, Timberlake, Cootney Fire and Rescue. Commissioner Wagner had a last-minute meeting, otherwise he would have been here as well, but they are all in support of our conversation today. At the end of the day, my goal would be for the fire districts in Cootney County to have a general feeling that, yes, you would support and implement the impact fee ordinance on behalf of the fire districts because we have no ordinance authority. The legislation, we've tried again this year, does not want to allow fire districts to have legislative authority, and they're tightening down more on that. And they're not willing to say counties and cities must support us. So it's kind of a rock and a hard spot there. So we're hoping that the county will be able to help us out with that authority on that. Once that authority is given, then the other part would be that the county would be willing, like they did in the past, to collect the impact fees and remit them back, you know, quarterly, monthly, whatever it is, for whatever the nominal fee might be, as we did in previous go-around. Before I turn it over to Ann, there was a lot of gun-shyness on impact fees. It's been something that a lot, everybody's like, yes, we need them, we need them. Growth has to pay for itself. But the problem has been is when we experienced them back in 2010, 2011, it wasn't done quite correctly. And we had a, it was a whole different market of what's going on and growth going on. So a right decision was made because of the way they were formed to counsel those and refund the money back. But we're 10 years now later, and we need to address that situation for emergency services. So with that, I'd like to just turn it over to Ann and let her go through her brief presentation. I believe you all should have received a copy of it last week that I'd sent in, and I'll just let her talk and then stand for any questions, please.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, Ann.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I am assuming that you all can see this presentation, or at least have it printed in front of you. Is that correct?
No. Chandra, can you share screens? Okay, so we're sharing screens with you. Can you bring it up on your screen?
I have it on my screen. I just wanted to make sure you all could see it.
Okay. We cannot yet, so... So it says we are screen sharing, so can you share your screen?
Let's see. The host is disabled. Participants green sharing. As long as you can see it, I can go through it with you. We'll be fine.
Yeah, we can't.
Here you go. I think.
No, we can't see it, so give us just a second and we'll try to...
Okay.
I actually wish you could do that.
Right.
There we go.
It's coming up.
No, I can't see what you're seeing. I'm not very, very... Let's see.
Fit to window, maybe? It is.
I'm just going to...
There we go.
All right, we got it.
Okay, we got it.
Okay. All right. Here we are. Oh, I miss the old days.
As do I.
All right, here we are. Yay. Yes, thank you so much for giving me some time to give you kind of a quick overview of what the fire districts are asking of you and be able to answer any questions you might have about what impact this would have to you as the county. Starting just a minute to focus on fire and EMS within your county, you know that your taxpayers rely on seven fire districts to provide fire protection and emergency medical response. You have a mixture of urbanized, agricultural, wildland interfaces. The districts are very large. They cover long distance when they're replying to calls. And you obviously have a lot of different geography in your community, so what might look like it's close might be across a lake or a mountain. It'd take a little bit longer to access. When we talk about fire service delivery, we need a couple of things. We need really trained firefighters. We need well-located stations, and we need those stations to have apparatus and equipment. Having the right combination of those things gives us the best response time, and that is measured in how long it takes to dispatch the call, turn out in the station, and then travel to a call. Response time does matter, and obviously, in more urbanized areas, it's expected to have a faster response. You're having a city response of fire and EMS. In the more rural areas, there's not an expectation that either a fire engine could get to you that quickly, nor that you would be receiving that level of service. However, the reason we talk about response time is that it has two very critical impacts on your constituents. Number one being, if it takes more than eight minutes to arrive to a structure fire, that's when flashover begins and the fire moves from one room to the rest of the structure, making it much more difficult to fight, and obviously resulting in higher risk of mortality, higher risk of property loss, and then also, there's more risk to the firefighters in fighting that fire. Also, we know that time is critical on an emergency medical response as well. You want a paramedic to be able to intervene for trauma, heart attack, or stroke, administer oxygen, perform CPR, mobilize your spine, control your bleeding as quickly as possible because our brains do start to die after four to six minutes. And so these times, obviously, in a rural area, a fire engine, a paramedic, an ambulance is not going to get to someone, you know, in under four minutes. But the closer we can get to that point, the better outcome for our communities. Commissioner Rudaba also mentioned earlier that growth is putting a strain on the district's ability to respond to the calls within this desired amount of time. And I don't mean desired like within four to eight minutes, but desired as in what they're currently or have been able to respond in the past. Many of the districts don't have enough stations and apparatus, or they're not located in the right place to continue that current level of service. By not adding new stations or new apparatus now, the risks include those increasing response times, increased property loss, increased mortality. Also, inadequate response time can affect the district's fire rating, which, as you know, the amount we pay in our fire insurance premiums on our homes or commercial structures is related to the ISO rating. So a fire district that is not able, does not have the capital infrastructure it needs to provide a good response time is resulting in a community that is paying more in their fire insurance premiums than they might otherwise. There are several ways for fire districts to maintain their level of service as they're growing. The hope is that additional growth will generate enough additional property tax revenue to at least cover the increase in the cost, in the growth of operations, including salaries, fuel, maintenance, et cetera. They will put all state legislation aside and just pretend that things are still the way they are today. But as you all probably know, as elected officials overseeing your county's budget, there's not usually a whole lot of money left over in your property taxes after you pay all of your operating expenses to build new capital. For the county, it would be to build new jail facilities or additional parks, anything like that. So if we continue to do what we normally do, which is bond for these kinds of capital infrastructure, that's putting that additional tax burden on the taxpayers. And existing residents have been showing us that they do not want to have their taxes increased or to be able, to be asked to continue to approve bonds for these kinds of capital expenditures. So as taxpayers are telling us, telling local officials they want to have growth pay for itself, impact fees are the tool that we can have in our toolbox to have the growth portion of new capital paid for by growth so that taxpayers' dollars, property tax dollars, can go for non-growth improvements, like the replacement of existing aging buildings or vehicles. The state statute does allow fire districts to have impact fees. As the Commissioner explained, they just don't yet allow the fire districts to collect their own fees or to adopt an ordinance for their fees. They essentially, the state statute essentially makes the fire districts beholden to the cities and the counties that they serve to be able to receive those impact fees and use them toward growth-related capital. That is because only cities and counties are providing those building permits, and building permits are where the point in the process in which we assess those fees. I'm going to stop there for just a second, see if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ann?
Ann, you mentioned legislation, and I know you're talking about the tax legislation. Are you aware of any impact fee legislation?
There were three bills for impact fees, all of them very minor. One was specifically putting the word ambulance districts in, so that would be your district that you contract with the fire district. So while we were already collecting impact fees on ambulance services, they just made it more clear in the ordinance. That one, I believe, has passed. One was about how we determine the residency requirements of the people we put on our advisory committees. Those are the only two that made it to the floor this year.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No.
Go right ahead. Our time is somewhat limited, Ann, so...
I know. I'm going to just zip past this part.
Right ahead.
I'm going to just remind you that impact fees are only paid by new development. Someone's remodeling their house, building a barn, they're not going to pay an impact fee. Fees are calculated only to cover the share of the capital item that's because of growth. We can't use it to replace buildings, as I said before. Impact fee eligible services, this is just a side note, that counties are able, and many of them are starting to, collect impact fees for sheriff, jail, coroner, parks as well, and roads and bridges. Cities, police, fire, EMS. So there's a broad range of impact fees that can be collected, and as this state has been growing so rapidly out of the recession, we have a lot of increased interest, particularly among counties, to evaluate some of these funding opportunities. We'll just leave you with this. It's your own free time. It articulates what the Idaho State Statute requires us that we do. And the two important parts is that we have an impact fee advisory committee go through the process with it. Those are members of the development community and taxpayers at large who provide the adopting entity, which would be you or the cities, with an advisory opinion and some input about whether or not they believe this is right for their community. This, I'll kind of skip over, but this is the study methodology that we go through in order to meet the state statute compliance. We are articulating who we currently serve and what level of service we currently provide because impact fees can't make your level of service better. They're just designed to help it from declining. Then we identify how much growth is coming, how much growth-related capital we need, like another fire station or another fire engine. And then we divide that growth-related cost by the amount of growth that's coming. That's the simple math. This is an example of a fire district's capital improvement plan. So they have a 10-year plan of things they need that are capital expenses. And you'll see that in the growth portion, only some of them are impact fee eligible, and some of them will need to be funded from property taxes or other sources. The bottom of this screen, you'll see that in Kuna, their fire district needs $8.2 million worth of capital in 10 years. Only half of it, $4.2 million, is impact fee eligible. The rest of the things are replacement. So this would be the calculation for Kuna, that if every new house that we projected being built in that community and every commercial square foot were to pay their share, the impact fee would be $700 per house and .35 cents per non-residential. That just happens to be less than how much property taxpayers have already paid into the system. So again, the fire districts are asking the cities and the counties that they work within to consider partnering with them and allowing this work to be done and for impact fees to be considered by their communities. Would require the county approve an impact fee advisory committee that would be put together by the fire districts with your input and approval. Public hearings would need to be held so that the eventual EIPs or capital plans would be amended into your comp plans so that the county keeps sort of a global perspective of the kinds of capital that will be occurring in your county. There would be a final county public hearing on the funds, and then the county would collect the funds in the unincorporated area as building permits came in, first those revenues to the fire district to pay for the capital. And most of our counties are charging an administrative fee to do that collection and disbursement. I think that's pretty much what I already suggested, and so I'm open for questions. I know you have a busy day ahead of you.
Bill? Go ahead.
I have one. We collect a lot of taxes for cities and other taxing districts, so if we're only collecting this for the county portion, do the cities then collect the impact fees because it's on the building permit side? Okay.
Yeah.
So they collect the...
That's where I think things went haywire about 10 years ago, is that we didn't have everyone all at the table, and some people decided to opt out. So it wouldn't be fair to pay an impact fee in the unincorporated county but not in the city, because everyone's enjoying the service. So that's why we're starting this time, making sure that the electeds are on board before we do the calculation part.
Okay.
So Ann, or Commissioner Rudy, no, that's perfectly fine. You can come up. What is it you need from us today?
Just, I'll speak on behalf of Commissioner Rudaba. I think we were looking either for grimaces or kind of two thumbs up, which would just say, we're either open to partnering with you, go do the work, come back to us, let us know what it looks like, and we'll give our opinion, or, as you say, never darken our door again. That is also a clarion.
Can we get a two-for-one deal, the county and the fire districts, with your company?
Pardon me?
Never mind. I'm just looking at it for the county. You've given me some information that I hadn't had before, so I'm kind of excited.
Volume discount.
Yes, that's what I wanted. I do want to hear from the Treasurer because his business would be impacted quite a bit. So before I give, I'll give you one thumbs up, but I'll give you two after I hear from the Treasurer.
And I would be happy online to talk to the Treasurer and show the methodology that Ada County, for example, is using to charge back the fire district for the work that they have to do to administer this process. And yes, in Valley County, Gem County, and Ada County, I am getting discounts the more people...
Thank you.
Treasure Matheson, go right ahead, Steve.
What are you looking for?
Just the fact that this is going to be one more thing that your office is going to have to, you know, distribute checks and then potentially, I guess, auditor receives the fees from them, so...
We do a lot of things like this already, certifications, and so we are set up to facilitate something along these lines without giving an opinion whether it should be moving forward or not. The Treasurer's Office is capable of doing that, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Commissioner Rudy, come right forward, please. So you're waiting on us? Okay.
I'm absolutely fine. I would actually like to look into it for potential build-out of the jail for the county too. So I think going through it with the fire districts first will give us a lot more information and a way to move forward, so I support it.
Bill? You know, everybody talks about growth. I hear a lot of people saying, "Impact fees." Here we go. You've got three thumbs up.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Ann. Yes, you too, Ann. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Okay, then, moving on to item three, Timeline for Attorney Center Bond.
Yes.
Thank you all.
So, with the school bonds in March, then with the fire district bonds, which we're going to hear a presentation next week in May, I want to suggest to this board that we push our bond for the Attorney Center out to November for a couple of different reasons. I think we're going to see what happens with these two different elections and bonds. I do not want to cloud the issue with the fire department bond, should there be a lot of, oh, I don't want to say, just people being against one bond but not being against the other bond. So I don't want to cloud the issue, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Convergence of too many bonds at one time?
Yes. Yep, that as well. So I know that we were kind of on a hot and heavy timeline, but now the more I look at it, and I think Cory can speak to this, when we're doing a bond, we actually need to have a committee to sell the bond. So it just wouldn't be us three, but there was actually a committee put together somewhat, like they're talking about in the impact fee committee. So that's another reason why I came to the conclusion that if we're truly interested in having a bond pass, that probably November is going to be a better position for us to be in to have success.
Thoughts?
Well, I've said from the beginning, I think, I thought we had the cart way before the horse, and I'm glad to see things being pulled back, so...
And actually, Bill, this is partly, you know, you're urging us to go through the study because now it allows the overall, overreaching study with all of our buildings to be completed in not such a short timeframe. It would allow it a few months instead of having it by April.
I was opposed to it from the beginning.
From the overall study?
Well, no, from the hurry-up, let's get a bond out.
Yes.
I thought that was way premature.
And just so, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
I'm glad we're not doing that.
And just so that we're all on the same page, it is, it does require a two-thirds vote, doesn't it?
Yes.
So for the bond to pass, we were, we just learned of this, I guess, last week, but it does take a two-thirds vote, which is going to be extremely challenging. 51% would be challenging, but, you know, I want to think about it. Can we go a week? One more week, and then I'll let you know?
That's fine, but Bill and I, I think, are wanting to...
So you're for postponing?
Yep.
You're for postponing?
Yep.
That's two, November.
I just, I under, and I don't, I want to hear your thoughts, so go ahead and bring it back to us, but my issue is that we're going to, I believe, we'll get more failure if we rush through it, plus it won't give us an opportunity to actually move the parts around, you know, where everybody can go to Cootney County North and elections and all those moving pieces. If we try to hurry it up in the next month, I think we're just setting ourselves up for bad decisions.
Okay, so my thoughts, no, and typically, in a November ballot, we have a lot of issues that come up, and so what I did not want to do is have this get caught up in the convergence of a lot of other issues. But if that's what's going to be happening in May, what's scheduled for May, by the way? Does anybody, can...
I don't think anybody's here for elections.
Are the highway districts this year, does anybody know? They might be. Highway and fire could be this year. We don't have precinct people. City elections are November. So the real question is, do we want, do we want to give it more exposure knowing that we're potentially competing with other elections? Or do we want to, you're not limiting the exposure, but we're being more, we're being harder pressed for time if we do it in March, but there's less competition on the ballot. I guess that's the two I'm trying to weigh.
For May. You mean the May election, yeah.
Did I say March or May?
I don't mind, I don't mind more issues. I haven't heard of any bonds going forward in November, but I definitely know that there's bonds going forward in March and May. So just to pile all the bonds on people at once, I think that's just recipe for disaster. The second thing is, we're looking at doing a lot of outreach, regular outreach, and so I think the opportunity to take six months and to really educate the public on what is going on, I think is just going to give us a better opportunity to get that word out. And I'm kind of excited about the fair being 10 days, having a community booth or a county booth for the community there. booth for the community there to educate on some of these things. I think the exposure is going to be huge, considering the last fair we had was 90,000 people. So I'm, that's kind of where I'm at. And I don't know if Cory, are you interested to speak to the committee part of it?
We do a lot of, Cory Trapp, Longwell Trapp Architects, we do a lot of school bonds, too, and I equate this to our experience with those, is that you need to put together, if you're going to really go forward with this, some sort of a citizens committee that's going to help you sell the bond, and they can say things that you can't say as commissioners, they can, they can promote things better, and they can tell people to vote yes, where you can only tell people, we need you to vote either yes or no. So if you want it to pass, and you also need more time to put that together. Typically, with school bonds, we find that a three-month time period is a really good time period to promote, and if you're shorter than that, sometimes it's difficult to really get the message out well enough.
What does this do to your schedule, Cory?
It doesn't really affect us that much. I mean, it gives us more time to do the overall master plan study if you choose to move forward with that. I don't think we're as rushed, and we can do probably a little bit more thorough job on making sure we're making the right, proper decisions on it. We get input a little bit better from everybody. On the overall building, we can still keep moving forward on the design of the Attorney Center, and it's about the time that you would start construction anywhere. Construction won't start till probably next spring anyway, so it doesn't affect that too much.
Okay. Sold, I'm fine. Okay, then. Okay? November?
November.
Done. Thank you, thank you, Cory. Okay, health? So we're done with that item? Okay, item number four, health district appointment process, Leslie.
So we have a process already set up for our advisory boards, and I don't necessarily think that we need to do that with this, I'm open to that, but I was thinking, just open it up, social media, put it on our website, hey, anybody interested in serving on the health district, because we've got openings coming in June, send us your resume, and we can treat it just like the other thing. We can review all the resumes, determine if there's any candidates we want to interview. But my understanding is voting's going to happen in April, so we need to get this process sooner, because they want to open the ballots in May because of the expiration in June. So that's why we're moving it up, so.
And we can keep it as simple as resumes.
Yep.
You know, this way you don't have to go through, well, it is still a formal process, but I don't think we need to create, or uniquely create, any applications. So if we can go with resumes, I think that'll expedite everything. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Bill?
I think whoever we appoint to panhandle health board needs to be someone who's in an elected position, so that they can, if they really do a bad job, they can be recalled. These appointments without election to, was it five years? Pretty serious.
Five, yes.
Yeah.
So I want that person to be an elected official. I don't care if it's the treasurer. Steve, it's just important they be elected.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we'll go by resume. We have one opening coming up. Do we know if any of the other districts, well, we're not going to be involved, we'll be voting on the others, but we're not going to be looking at that selection process. That's up to the individual, the other four counties.
Right, so we'll start outreach for those applications.
Okay, cool.
Or resumes.
All right. Okay, then, BOCC, item number five, BOCC departments budget review schedule.
So now having two budget seasons under us, the first one, we had presentations by all 14 departments. The second one, because of COVID, we had only our liaisons come to us. I need, for me to have a good process, I really need to have, to hear from all, all 14. So I'm willing to do people outside my liaisonship if you guys aren't interested in hearing all 14, but the first year, we did hear all 14 requests, so that's what I would prefer this year, but if you guys don't prefer that, then I will just meet with all 14 individually.
Deana, what did we do last year? Do you recall?
Well, we have meetings for each elected group, and within the electeds, they meet with their.
You need to come to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, come on up.
So each individual elected has a meeting, official meeting, and the departments that are under each elected, they meet with their elected separately. It's not a public meeting, they meet offline.
Oh, okay. But what Leslie's referring to here are the 14 departments that report to us.
Just the BOCC departments.
Yep.
So it's kind of your internal process before you bring it forward to a public meeting.
Yep.
Bill?
I don't have any problem with all 14. I think we got a better balance that way.
Okay, I'm going to probably, for starters, I think I'm just going to meet with my own, that I'm the liaison, because eventually, they're going to come before us anyway, so I think what I'm going to do is meet with those that I liaison with, and if I decide to go further from there, I'll go, but I think it's up to each of us individually.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, to meet with our liaisons would take the place of those 14 meetings. So what Deana is talking about is not necessarily, they're not necessarily going to come before us again, they would come before us now, and then we.
Okay, so you're talking about a single meeting as opposed to individual with those groups that we liaison with, and then a group?
Correct.
We do a consolidated meeting for each elected in May.
Okay, so now we're, now we're really spreading this out.
Okay, let's do this again.
We'll try to go back.
Go ahead.
So I prefer that we schedule a board meeting with all 14 departments, whether we do two or three at a time, I'm open to that part of it. What I don't want is us to only meet with our liaisons, because then I don't know what's going on with the airport, I don't know what's going on with community development, until the consolidated meeting with the auditor.
That is correct.
And to me, that's too late. I want to be able to have time to process and hear it.
Okay.
Because last year, I felt that department heads were having to restate themselves, because they already met with their liaison, but now they're having to restate it again. So that's just kind of what I'm trying to.
So basically, it comes down to one meeting instead of two? Yeah, because if I were to meet individually with those groups that I liaison with, I'd still have to participate in the broader one.
Yes.
So what you're saying is, let's have one, let's do them all?
Yes.
Done.
Okay.
How's that?
Good.
Okay? Okay.
I did text Greg, because I didn't want him to sit through this whole meeting, but, so he'll probably come in any second now. I'm sorry, we ready to go on?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
We're moving on to item six, office, no, I'm sorry, five, BLCC department budget rev, no, we just did that.
Yep.
I'm sorry, six, Office of Emergency Management Building and Repairs.
Yes, oh, and actually Cory's here, so I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. We have a list of things that were found to, after they moved in. The roof leaks multiple locations, there's window leaks in the training room, there's no heat in one of the restrooms, there's a disconnected duct in one of the offices, mini-split server room does not work. So there's several items, I don't think this is an exhaustive list, that is going to have to be addressed. We no longer have those dedicated COVID funds for that project, so we're going to have to determine, number one, I mean, some of these things have to be repaired. Number two, what part of it can still be under the contractor's warranty? So that's what I was hoping Cory might be able to speak to, like, step one, we contact the contractor for this, and then step two, you know, find out our responsibility and our funding.
First thing I need to do is see the list.
Okay, sorry.
And get an idea of that, because some of the things we didn't, like the mini-split in the IT room was existing.
Okay.
We assumed that it worked, so.
Okay.
The roof leaks, we didn't do anything to any of the roof, unless it's a leak around a mechanical unit that we put up there new.
Okay.
There were several spots in the roof that we could see there were old leaks, supposedly the roof had been redone, so we thought that maybe it wasn't leaking anymore.
Gotcha.
So we'll just have to look at it and see what, what parts of it the contractor was working on.
Okay.
And which parts of it are things that were already existing that we didn't touch.
Okay. So Greg, sorry, I kind of just, I wasn't sure if you were stuck or not. So I just read off the list of the five items on here, so if you're okay getting with Cory, and the two of you can address all the issues, and Cory can tell us which ones can be addressed by the contractor, and then which ones we just need to go forward with. So is that good for everyone?
Yep. Bill, you okay?
Mm-hmm. Call the punch list.
The punch list, okay, good enough.
Okay.
Okay, item number seven, budget book tour. Go ahead, Leslie.
And I didn't bring my book down.
That's okay, I brought mine. Okay, so I want to thank Leslie for letting us have this little bit of time. I'm going to keep it really short. If you have any questions, you can come to me. This, this beauty. Your budget book.
Yeah.
You received your budget book.
Last week.
Last week. Big thanks to Michelle, she is the, the main author and creator of all the wonderful infographics and all the information that's in there. I wanted to just do this in a public meeting to let folks know, because this is such a great communications tool for the public. This encapsulates the entire budget, and what the county does with that budget and how it delivers services.
Correct.
It's broken up by tabs. There's an overview that gives a high level of what the organization does and gives highlights. So if you just want the executive summary, the first tab will get you there. Financial policies tab, after the organizational overview of how we're set up, talks about how we manage our finances very clearly and succinctly. The fund overview talks about each individual fund. We talk about general fund, we talk about building fund. This section spells out those funds, where the money comes from, how it's authorized by statute, what happens in those funds, very helpful. And then at the end, there is a quick snapshot of the fund balances, which is nice. So then, there's a couple of sections here that goes through the budget in more detail. So the whole budget process that we go through, what was the end result of that, those sections cover that. There's a capital improvement plan section that talks about all of the future investments that we made in the budget for all the big projects, and it lists them out. Then, there's a big section called department information, and that goes through and talks about each individual department, how many employees are on there, the kinds of services they provide. Michelle has added pictures, infographics, there's performance measures that the departments have submitted, they've submitted narratives on what they do, and there's a lot of fun pictures in there, too. I think you'll find some of those noxious weeds are actually pretty, you might even want them in a bouquet. And then after that, there's a glossary, I know a lot of times there's questions on some of the, the different.
Terminology.
Terminology that we use, so that, that's a nice way to, especially for people outside the county, to, to kind of get a feel for what we're talking about in some of these meetings, so.
How do the people outside the county get a look?
I was just going to ask.
At the book? This is posted on our website, and I believe that Nancy put this out on Facebook as well. So that will go out today on Facebook as a link.
Only by Facebook or computer, you can't come in and get a copy.
We can print a copy, we have extra copies, but if somebody wants a printed copy, we can produce that.
Not everybody's on the internet.
That's right. So we have that. We also do it with our CAFER, but it's all out on our website, so, questions?
If it's available to the public, it is a public document, it's on the internet?
Yes.
On the website.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Okay, so before moving on to our final item, which is a pending item, status review, Bill, you indicated, I just want to go back for a moment to the health district appointment process. Does any one of us know or knows what's going on with the legislation?
Yes.
Did they pass it?
1060 is still waiting to be voted on by the House. It's on their list to be voted on, but it's been in the 30s and now probably the 20s of bills ahead of it. So when that happens, then all that changes for us is, the health boards will not make the mandates, they will make the recommendation to the commissioners, the commissioners, and actually, I think, cities and elected officials will then be involved at that point to write the ordinance for the mandate, if they so choose.
Right.
So at that point, I'm comfortable with not necessarily appointing a non-elected official, because they can't make those decisions anymore. We would make them as elected officials at this level.
I'm fine with that, as long as that legislation passes.
Right, fair enough. That's why I brought.
It being down there right now doesn't mean anything.
Correct, and that's why I didn't bring it up on our original discussion.
Right, okay, good.
Because until that happens, then, you know, we need an elected official in that position, so.
Fair enough. Okay, good clarification. All right, then, so final item, pending item, status review. So let's go through this, okay. The first item is county forum government study committee. Okay, so tomorrow, we meet to review and vote on the bylaws? I'm sorry, Bill, that's supposed to be yours, go ahead.
Go ahead. You did a great job.
Okay, well, that's what it is, okay? That's for tomorrow, scheduled. Okay, facilities expansion, Leslie?
Yep, next meeting is, I think, March 17th. Is that correct? Yeah, so I don't know if you have anything to add, if you, okay, sure.
I talked to Ken this morning. He is going to wrap up the bubble diagrams with some graphics and things, hopefully by the end of this week. He'll send it to me maybe Thursday, and then hopefully, first part of next week, we'll send it out to you, so you can send it out to the departments to look at ahead of time for the 17th meeting.
Sure.
And I only have one other question, where's the meeting going to be?
Um.
Because this room's not available, right? I just need to know.
Our boardroom, upstairs on the third floor.
Okay.
Yep, because we're not going to have probably as big a group. I think our last group was.
I think 10 is our largest group that we had.
Yeah, and even in that room, if we take out chairs, can accommodate 10. So, yeah, so it'll be upstairs in the boardroom. Thank you, Cory.
And when is that again?
March 17th.
March 17th, okay. St. Patrick's Day. Okay, PAC Airport lease?
Yes, Stephen has and is reviewing a proposal by PAC. So we should hear probably later in the week, hopefully by next Monday, and see if it's acceptable to all parties and move forward.
1A, 1B audio upgrade. Nancy, are we just going to be discussing the?
We should be over the contract by next Tuesday.
Okay.
I heard from the other side.
Great.
Now, does that include the service component ongoing?
We'll make that decision.
Okay, fine. Got it. Deana, financial snapshot, which we have before us.
Yes, it's that time again. So again, I'll be brief. I've updated the information through March 4th, so you can see at the top right how the elected officials are doing on their budgets. Right now, as a county, we've collected half of our revenue, which is ahead of schedule, and we are at about 40% of our budget for spending, so that's below. Right now, our watermark's about 42.5%, so we're just under, which is good. Our health insurance spending is about 38.6%, so even a little bit lower.
Mm-hmm.
So doing okay on the medical claims.
Mm-hmm.
So far to date, our medical claims are 4.3 million. Assigned fund balance, you looked at that last week, so I've plugged in those preliminary numbers. Next week, I'll be bringing before you the resolution to move that fund balance around as you indicated you would like it assigned.
Last week, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Currently, the committed fund balance remaining of the 7.7 million, mainly for capital projects. We got about 1.3, 1.4 million left there unspent, so we're moving right along with our capital projects. Our out-of-fund balance, or our fund balance out-of-budget use has not moved much. We have a lot of open positions right now, so our annual payroll is at about 62.7 million. That's when we open the budget, if we were to open the budget today, that's what our new year budgeted amount would be for payroll, which puts us at about 2.4 million every two weeks for payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as far as any other out-of-budget spending, I'm not seeing anything that's material. Okay, as far as any other out-of-budget spending, I'm not seeing anything that's material. I will say that your top budget drivers for spending so far, we've spent about 27 million on personnel since 10-1. Building and construction, 7.1 million to date. Technology, that's software, hardware, subscriptions, that sort of thing, anything tech-related, about 1.6 million to date. Vehicles, we're at 1.7 million, and our non-capital equipment at just under a half a million. So we're looking pretty good, looking pretty healthy. So any questions, or if you think of something, you can contact me offline.
So going, just going back up?
Sure.
To how we're tracking with the, with regard to the budget? Okay, so the sheriff is about 1.6% over for this time of year?
Sure.
Do you know why?
It's probably just timing of spending.
Okay.
They had a lot of capital stuff, and we did pay the lease payment.
Oh, okay.
So that's probably what's driving it. Yeah, that was almost 700,000 all in one lump sum.
Right, right.
Yeah, so that's kind of the weirdness of how the budget works. It looks like they're over, but you're not going to pay that 700,000 monthly, you're going to pay it at one chunk.
It's a timing thing.
Yep, our big, our big expenses are usually pretty lumpy, they're not even throughout the year.
Any questions for Deana?
Just the only thing is, March 31st, we should be at 50%. That would be our.
Yes.
50% mark.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Deana.
You're welcome.
Okay, that was the financial snapshot. Moving on to ballot bond language, Leslie?
Yeah, so today at 1 o'clock or 1:30, oh, boy, I forgot, 1:00. We're having a Zoom meeting, hopefully we've got all the kinks worked out now, with Holly Troxel and Zion's Bank to talk about the bond. And so we'll go ahead with that. And then the building financing, we can still continue to talk about it. No matter what we use to repay, there will be a loan, because we have no way to raise $20 million to pay in cash. So no matter what we have, so what we're really trying to do is figure out what our monthly payment or yearly payment is going to be on the loan.
Right. And what's interesting is, the general obligation bond must by statute go to a public vote, and that does require two-thirds to pass. If we go with a combination of forgone and private financing, not, don't necessarily need, probably don't need a public vote, but we do need a public hearing. So that's, that's potentially another possibility. But anyway, that's what we're looking at, we've made a decision to proceed to November with the bond, and I think that's it.
Yeah, but I just want to add one more thing about the, the funding is, I'm going to ask today, well, I guess I could just ask it today, then. I just have questions about the bond and, and how, well, okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
If the legislature does not touch new growth and URDs, we still may be able to take the URDs to fund the yearly payments instead of forgone?
That's a very good point. And Deana, I don't know if you can answer this, this year, correct me now if I'm wrong, where do, for, the closures are supposed to produce about 3.4 million in revenue to us, that's this fiscal '21. What happens in '22 and '23, do we have any idea? I mean, is it fair to assume we have closures?
Microphone.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
It's okay, in general, if, if we are able to take our new growth, that would raise the watermark of our budget. So that budget would increase by whatever that closure is, that would carry forward into the next year, because then, of course, you look back and you say, okay, I'm going to take 3% or whatever of that new watermark.
Okay.
So to make it clear in my mind, if it's, let's just say, 3.4 million is coming in from URDs, and the legislature does not impact that, then from now on, we can say, just like we said with the 700,000, that 3.4 million is allocated every single year to the capital project budget. So it doesn't get lost or anything every year. And then eventually, what we could say after 20 years, after it's paid off, we could say, you know what, that 3.4 million, we don't need that, it goes back into the base budget.
That's correct.
Yep, and then spreads out the levy.
Or you just take zero for X amount of years.
Yep.
The other thing you're considering, and, and I don't believe they voted on it yet, is, is making or rendering whether or not we contribute to a URD optional. So a city or a county can decide whether or not they want revenue to go, or tax dollars to go to a URD.
And that will help our new growth.
Yes.
Yep.
Precisely. Thanks. Okay, public comment? None?
Is anybody on the line? Does anybody have public comment?
Okay. 11:58, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.